Yeah, I'm gonna call the order at seven oh one. The meeting for the overall special meeting. And at this time we'll do the roll call. Could you take the roll call? What's your name?
Alderman Warman. Alderman Motley. Alderman Wilkins.
President.
Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers.
All right, if I get everybody to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and first of all, I think we have the order will have the only comments from people on this. There's some folks here. They're present in that meeting. We're doing a special meeting before we get to the regular scheduled meeting for tonight. Just so you know, those folks that are here are probably from the other part. So at this point, we have a presentation from Gary Davis from Bartlett West. Is that the you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor, I'm Gary. Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you as well.
Welcome to the board here.
Thank you.
So a couple of things I'm here to help you guys with is we have two big projects going on. I think you probably already know this. I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail unless you want me to.
Okay.
That's what I'm here for. But first one I'll just say is drinking water. So as you know, the plant, we have an ongoing project there. It's in design, which has actually been submitted to DNR and we're addressing comments. I just handed Mike a new set of plans tonight that were just addressed. That really, that project really doesn't address capacity. At the plant, you're good on capacity. It addresses, the thing is about worn out. The parts, anything with a motor or electronics needs to be completely replaced. It's over thirty years old. Now, we're adding generators, chemical feed. There's some new, a few new things that it never did before, you know, that's gonna do now, like the generator. But most of it is just replacing what was already there. So that project is definitely a lot further ahead than the wastewater. And we're marching along and following DNR's instructions there. It's getting funded by DNR. So they're having a pretty big role with that. So that one is, there's no action tonight, just a, just a quick update. You'll see a lot more of me moving forward on that project as we get into bid openings and some of the meetings here.
If I could ask, at any time you need help peppin' some people up, so to speak, or being a squeaky wheel, I'll be glad to help you with that as mayor. So if at any time I know that, she does a great job of working with you and Mike and everybody, what we're doing. But I've found that, you know, when you're in line with a bunch of other people, you can sit and wait, or you can proactively, in a good way, in a positive, professional way, can kinda help move your cause along. Okay, so that's what my intent is here. We've done it with Mr. Eric Gansett building. We've got that posted finally, got the DNR to, you know, look at that and move us to top the list on that because of the unsafe things we have. So I'm willing to help in any way I can in the capacity of me helping here as mayor, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. So far, so good.
I don't, I'm not a real patient, so I'm working on it, but I don't know if I ever get it.
Appreciate the insight there. Any other questions on drinking water, going to wastewater? There's not a lot of drama with it. It's pretty, there's no environmental, which tends to be get into some of the things. But this is on an existing site. There's really not much there to, to share tonight. It's pretty straightforward. If you wanna get into some detail, they've got plans. I can send you some of the specifications or anything that Mike's got.
Mike's pretty good with that. Bring me up speed and so is Heather as well, so.
Okay, wastewater, is that okay?
Hmm.
All right, so the driver, I always like to think back, what's the driver? Just like I told you on the water, it's not capacity, it's not DNR. Your water quality is just, a wastewater, the difference is, is water quality. And there's a tattoo that I got, actually, that says March first, twenty twenty-two, because that's the big day. That's the day you guys have to hit new limits. So it's already been said that that's the day you guys have to hit ammonia and coal out, that you've never, some limits that you've never hit before. So what that means is you have to make some upgrades. And what we wanna do is keep doing what you've always done. You've got the cheapest, I worked for a ton of small towns in Missouri. Nobody has cheaper rates than you. And it's because of the systems you guys have and the relationships you guys have with the farmers that has been to help that. So what we wanna do ideally is expand on that. What we did was, we did a facility plan for you guys. We got a DNR grant for that. Facility plan is just a fancy way of saying report. And the report showed that you had a really high flow coming to the plant, which was, we really didn't believe when we saw it. It was, it was higher than most of the towns we worked for. So we took a step back. We had to finish the report because the grant had a deadline, we submitted it. And then we came back and we did some flow monitoring. The flow had confirmed it, which was bad. And I was pretty disappointed when I saw that.
So intake flow you're talking about?
Intake flow, so that's how much water we're dealing with. It's a lot of stormwater is what it is. It's not the domestic waste. Well, there's, that's the bad news. The good news is during that time, some other farmers have come forward and proposed. And with, now considering these things, I think that's gonna offset it. Well, now I've got new data, I've got new farmer proposals. I've got farmers that are coming forward with new proposals. I got new farmers that have never been involved. And so we've got all these pieces now. And so tonight, what I'm asking is for an amendment to go ahead and step into that and amend our report and evaluate the new flows, the new farmers, and see what our cost estimate is. Because right now, I don't know what we're designing until, things have changed since we buttoned that report up.
Mm-hmm.
Once we get the report buttoned up, then we'll know exactly what we're designing. And then we go design and start, and then building construction throughout that, so. That's really the next step on this. I could go into all kinds of detail with that as well.
If you're telling me the new data needs to be figured to help us cut costs for the overall system to be upgraded by twenty-two is what you're telling me, I think, if I'm hearing correct, is that right?
New information is coming in since we finished.
Which will help us potentially.
That's gotta be accomplished, so.
Any, what are your thoughts?
This is a must.
Yeah.
Now, what I propose on this task order you're gonna see is hourly. The reason why I do that is because it's, anytime if you guys have contracted with anybody, to me, it's the most fair approach on this. Because I don't wanna charge you guys for additional things I don't need to do. But if I have to do a lump sum, I'm gonna cover myself to make sure at the end of the day I can, I'm covered. I propose an hourly on this, and if I can get to a solution as quick as I can, I'm done. I need to wrap the report up and submit to DNR. So that's what I propose there. I've got a buddy in there for you guys on that, so. Let me see if this is in here, yeah, so.
So your, your group doesn't lay down and take naps and count that as hourly against us, does it? Because I'm a goddamn group of you I've seen in my business, not here, but in my professional business over there. So, yeah, I think that's enough.
So are there any other questions for me on wastewater, wastewater treatment, life in general, or anything else? Thanks, I look forward to learning.
Appreciate what you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Gary.
So, the next, is there something to do with this at this point?
It's, it's two, two things down, so we have a, to approve the task order.
But we might do that for business, I mean, if we're not, if we're just talking about, maybe it's relevant to what we're discussing as well. That's okay. So what we're looking at on the action agenda is the purchasing, approving the task order, CN nineteen dash TO dash WW oh two from Bartlett West for a wastewater facility plan amendment. Looking for a motion on that.
Move that we approved the task order CN nineteen dash TO dash WW zero two. Sorry.
So motion's been made, it's been seconded, so we do a roll call up now?
I can just.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If it passes?
If you like, I'd find out.
Sure. All the information you need? I'll do like the one I made.
You gotta go to work though right now. Get busy like.
No, no, exactly, no.
That was my concern. You did a good job selling that. You hold this aside, I can get done really quick before I have like, an hour.
Two hours a day, Larry.
You'll be fine. If you can't have a little fun up here with us, you better not come back, because we got you in our hands. All of it?
Yeah.
Thank you though for your presentation, thanks for your help.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
We'll move on to the action items. It's the legal, on the legal part of the agenda, is authorizing city to participate in creation of Murma Health ordinance. Need to have some discussion maybe about that here a moment. And I will let, Heather, would you like to bring us up to speed on the bill?
Actually, Jenny Ock's here for Murma, so she can bring you guys on.
Very nice, yeah.
I'll give you kind of a brief background. I'm Jenny Ock in Centrilia, my hometown, so it's kind of nice to see some familiar faces. Matthew Broderston is actually my executive director. And he normally does meetings like this, but he was actually tied up at another city presenting the same thing. So I chose the shorter drag home and chose to come here. So just to give you a quick background, Jenny Ock from Murma, I'm the finance director there. Murma, and I sometimes refer to that now, since we've gotten involved with health, as the traditional Murma. But traditional Murma is a self-insurance pool that actually formed in nineteen eighty-one. And we are a pool that provides work comp, property liability insurance coverage to municipalities throughout the state of Missouri. And we are currently up to eighty-three members throughout the state. So back when the Affordable Care Act came about, that put a lot of pressures on the health insurance rates. And so our members came to Murma asking us to help them out and do something about that. So that's when our board, back in early two thousand fourteen, our board of directors directed the Murma staff to investigate any options that we could for Murma. In order to establish the health pool, we need claims experience. So we lost history in order to be able to even establish a pool. But however, in commercial insurance, they won't provide your claims history to you unless you have at least a hundred employees. So since the majority of our membership is under a hundred employees, we needed to come up with a plan. So what we did was, we started a two-phase program in two thousand fifteen. And basically what that did was, we set up individually self-funded plans for cities. So the first phase has been getting, collecting all the claims experience and then establishing members in that program. So phase one, as of the end of last summer, actually allowed us to grow to twenty-two cities. And we are actually just over a thousand, a thousand employee lives. And the employee lives at a thousand, it makes us significant, because we are actuarially, what is the term? Actuarily significant in order to project future claims experience. So phase one has worked really well. We were able to improve each member's health insurance coverage that we added to our group, as well as we've saved those cities an estimated four and a half million dollars just in premiums. And then actually, as of last week, on June sixth, we ran another report. And those cities have an additional two point one million in what we call their claims accounts. This is kind of just some extra money the cities have to pay in monthly for their premiums. But anything that is left over, it's not spent, that is actually gonna be the city's money. So again, it's worked very well. Centrilia had joined at the beginning of two thousand eighteen. So the city of Centrilia has been in this program for about a year and a half. And you guys have just under eighty-two thousand in your claims account. So to move on to phase two, what traditional Murma did was we formed an official health committee, which actually City Administrator Heather Russell has been serving on since that was formed. She was elected to be joining on that. So during phase two, what we are doing is merging all of our cities into one group. And we are actually gonna be calling that Murma Health. So that's where I get the Murma, traditional Murma, and we have Murma Health. So the entity that we are gonna be forming is under a Missouri statute, which allows three or more cities to kinda work together in order to provide insurance coverages, which is actually the same way that Murma was formed. So the ordinance that the city has tonight says that Centrilia would like for Murma Health to form and to also be a member for a year. So there's a brief background, any questions?
So we have a, an internal employee health committee. It's comprised of a member of each department. And so far, feedback has been really favorable for our insurance coverage through Murma. And we are okay with continuing this. And by us joining and passing this ordinance, it doesn't commit us to lifelong commitment to stay with the self-insurance, but we would be able to be there for the creation. And we would be committing for at least next year. And like she said, we do have insurance, you know, that, that money that we pooled, we're gonna get back. So if our rates are a little bit higher, that money that we get back can help offset that cost a little bit, because we're not gonna have that data that we can traditionally do have for the rates. So they come, could come in a little bit higher, could come in a little bit lower? We're hoping that's a little bit lower.
Yeah, and the goal is to, yeah, at least have, you know, the same rates, if not even cheaper. The committee has actually started selecting service providers. So we've selected the TPA or the third-party administrator, which will be doing the claims handling and also, you know, the premium billing and things like that. And they're estimated to save a hundred and thirty thousand over the current program that we have. And we have the benefit manager consultant that we are working with in order to establish a pharmacy benefit manager or QDM. And they're expected to save anywhere from four hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars just on the medications for the first year.
Understand the benefits, what are the risks or the negatives of doing this?
The negatives of doing this? Well, I think, to focus on the positives, I think what you would get by joining or signing the ordinance tonight is one that you are gonna be an inaugural member. So you will be one of the first ones, you know, we have an annual meeting or a meeting that we're gonna be having in July to establish the board of directors. And then by becoming a member now, Heather, we have that opportunity to continue to serve in a leadership role and get to make those decisions. And by having as many members as we can join upfront, then when we go to those service providers and are getting the proposals and seeing what our stock loss insurance coverage is gonna be, it's going to allow us to have more employee lives to look at and get the best possible rates that we can in order to set this up. So the downside of it, I mean, I guess, you know, it, we could have higher rates.
And is that based upon, because at this point, you have a thousand you were talking about with the old one?
Uh-huh, correct.
So now you're starting something new. So you've had to speculate and project what you think and you hope will be the new nucleus of a consortium for insurance, is that correct?
Right, and the plan is to have these twenty-two members merge into this one pool. Their staggered rate, or sorry, staggered starting dates, I guess. The plan is to have everybody merge into a one-one renewal, which Centrilia is actually already on a one-one renewal. So that's when the city would officially start, would be January first.
And the potential, I guess, for higher rates would be if you don't get the conversion rate you're expecting of twenty-two? Is that what would affect the potential rates?
We're gonna establish the rates in August. So we will know in August what the rates are gonna be.
Okay, so it's not really contingent upon?
Right, right. We, we're gonna, we're gonna present all of our claims history that we have now to the stock loss carriers. So they have all that information, so we should save money.
But it's better to me that you're doing it that way versus we're having the risk of having to convert, right?
Right, yes, yeah, those rates will be established.
The benefits may not in this case.
And one thing that we've been working on as a committee is, right now, we have twenty-two cities and what, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six summer plans? Because Centrilia itself has two plans. And so they're all different, and they were all tailored for each city. But so we have to narrow it down to, I think, six.
Six to eight plans is what we're planning on having. So we won't have exactly your plan, I wouldn't think, unless that is actually just one of the plans that we pick. But it will be something similar.
The benefits being as robust as they are today or real close to a slight change as well?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. So what we're looking for now is authorization the city to participate in the creation of a Murma Health ordinance for that.
So Heather, everybody that you've been working with, you all are happy with this. I mean, you've been involved in this, and all the team leaders, you're liking what you're seeing, huh?
Yes, some of the concerns that we've had is with, so right now, VAS is actually handles our insurance. And so some of the issues that a lot of the cities have had, we haven't specifically had them, but I'm kinda seeing now where we're having some issues as well. But with that actual, wait, is that their, are they a TPA?
Yes, they're the third-party administrator. And that, that would be switching from VAS to MedPay.
And their, their fees just keep going up every single year. And now we're seeing that we're paying, and our, and it reflects in our rates. Whereas when we get this pool, then that part is gonna be greatly reduced.
Yeah, could, how about you?
How about you?
Hey, you stood there for breakfast. I'll swing a good free breakfast, I have labor, I don't mind. You get to go first, that's what they'll teach you.
Well, now we have that clear. Bill number please.
Two, three, zero, three.
I move that bill number two, three, zero, three be given a second read by Title One.
Sorry, second.
I have a motion in a second. I didn't, I missed a second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And ordinance of the city of Centrilia, Missouri authorizing the city to participate in the creation of Murma Health and further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as may be necessary for the creation of Murma Health and the city's participation therein. And with the bill number two, three, zero, three be given a second read by Title One.
Sorry.
All those.
I have a motion in a second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And ordinance of the city of Centrilia, Missouri authorizing the city to participate in the creation of Murma Health and further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as may be necessary for the creation of Murma Health and the city's participation therein. And with the bill number two, three, zero, three be adopted by roll call vote.
Sorry.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded for roll call vote for bill number two, three, oh, three to be accepted.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
So the, the bill passed. What's our word this summer? The pass?
That was a rough one.
Three, zero, two, one.
Okay, well, that concludes our business for this meeting. Unless we have some business that may arise, can we have?
And the commotion will adjourn?
Sorry, second.
Yeah, we have to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So which opposed adjourned?
Anyone need a break? Ladies and gentlemen, I have seven twenty-five. I call this meeting of the General Government Public Safety Committee to order. I know attendance has been taken. Comments from citizens? Hearing none, moving on to public safety. Fire department activity report in your packet? Any questions, comments, concerns? Any other for the fire department? Hearing none, moving on to police department. There is an activity report in your packet? Bob, anything you wanna point out?
We made a rank or best.
You're here.
I think most of us are ready.
Anything else on the activity report and your comments? Moving on to body camera quote. Information's in your packet?
If I may?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. As we see, it's a budget item. Well, we were a little short on the budget as far as, we thought some grants would come in, the grants, yeah.
We don't wanna talk about that.
One, they're very difficult to get, very competitive or anything else. We did receive a thousand dollar donation from the NFA charitable foundation for the purchase of body cameras. I talked to Heather about this this morning. We obviously, we would have sold the police car, but I believe we still haven't been paid for it as far as I know. I don't know what she found out about that today.
Nothing yet.
Okay. That bid that is in your packet is good till the end of the month. I think it's ninety-three hundred dollars, first year. It's a change. I would tell you, I had another body camera that just died. I've got three that would be somewhat reliable. I don't know what the discussion used to be as far as it goes, because like I said, we were, it was a budget item, six thousand. We get the thousand dollars from NFA charitable foundation, that makes it seven. This day and age, guys, I, I can't stress enough how important it is my guys have these things. The nitrogen, our investment over the last year is gonna save you a lot in the first time around. We got a good body camera video inputted. I, I'd like y'all to discuss it and see what we've come up with. And the fact is, like I said, we haven't been paid for the car yet, and I don't wanna rob the Peter to pay Paul. I don't wanna do that, but I'm just saying that this, we need to make a move on this sometime or another soon.
Well, some of the differences in this new system compared to what we currently have, this stores information in the cloud versus requiring that we have some sort of media server that we're loading all the videos into at the end of the shift or into the day, whatever.
Correct.
Are these, one of the issues that Tim and I have discussed, these cameras are basically solid. You can't open them, can't replace batteries, you can't do anything like that.
That's correct. These, these are the go-to that everybody is going to. There's only, there's only two manufacturers, and the other manufacturer we talked to, it was, it was in one of your packets at one time, and it was.
From what I understand, there's a replacement schedule for the cameras themselves, that's part of the circuit.
Right, correct. At the two and a half year mark and then the five year mark, you get new cameras. That's included with everything, yes, it's a five-year plan, but at two and a half years and five years, you get brand new cameras. And then you have, at the end of the five years, you have the option of going back into it again or just dropping out. And, you know.
So we're tied into this thing for five years, is what I'm hearing?
We are tied into it for five years.
Okay, what's the overall cost for five years?
It's in the, I did not bring my paper.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
It's on the last page of that.
Thirty-six thousand, four ninety.
Okay.
We had, so.
We're signing up for that now.
Right now, we have six thousand, about it plus a thousand dollar donation, so.
So if we assumed we would have put six thousand each year, well, that'd be thirty, so this is sixty-five hundred dollars in round numbers, more than we're.
But we're not obligated to pay for all five years upfront, are we?
No, no, it's, 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 it's.
Over five years, it's sixty-five hundred dollars more than what we prompted.
So at the end of five years, we have all the cameras and all that.
Correct.
Now, the time story is included in.
Everything that we need to turnkey and start is included in that.
How many hours a day will it save your men in this downloading, downloading is not.
Well, here, okay, hold on. Let me get into this just a little bit, because there's a lot more to it than just that. The, going with the Axon program, you give your prosecutors, you can give your prosecutors access to it, be that municipal or county. It saves Lieutenant Crisp having to burn CDs and DVDs, which he does for several hours, it seems like, at a time. It also, the fact is, when they walk in, they plug their camera in the dock, automatic download, they walk away, done. So hours, how much do I pay for that? I, I have done.
I'm just trying to, this has had to exact, you know, when we start to do this, I want us to start thinking in a, in a business case mode, if you follow.
Sure, sure.
So if you're gonna get back productivity or you're gonna get time back to be controlling or doing other things
that are helping us be a safer city, whatever. Well, I know it's gonna free up a lot of his time.
Yeah, I would like to know, you know, I kinda, I like forces would go into that, to know that, because then it helps us understand our return on investment. Does that make sense?
Yes. On a ten-hour shift, to download one camera, probably a ton of hours. Good.
So the biggest, the bigger thing is the risk by not having any, if we had another one.
Well, like I said, I think we've got five.
That was a huge risk, one.
And two of them, the one that Officer Dan for wears, the one that Lieutenant Crisp wears, his, he charged up, he told us today.
Wednesday.
Charged up Wednesday, he was off Thursday and Friday, used it through a couple of traffic stops on Saturday, and then died in the middle of one of them. one of them. So we're getting to the end of life of these things.
How old are those cameras?
Do what?
How old are those cameras?
This one's probably two years old.
Yeah, the one he's wearing currently is a couple of years old. But again, this also comes with no fault warranty. We run it over and as long as we send them a piece of it, they'll send us a new one. So drop the water, whatever.
Make sure I understand, we get new cameras to begin with, new cameras at two and a half years and then new cameras at five years.
Is that what you correct, sir?
So we're essentially signing a...
There's ten. There's ten, there's ten up here.
Okay, and the first year is nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two, and after six thousand, nine...
Out of curiosity, what hap... So we've been pushing all of this video to the cloud storage, you know, their service evidence dot com. At the end of five years, we decide not to renew with them. What happens to all the data that they have amassed?
You can still access it. Because I know that there's still some bars that... There's a evidence dot com light, LITP, that you still have access to.
It gives you like a read-only type.
Right.
We don't have to make a decision on this tonight. This is really just for your information, but we would do a full board meeting next week. I'll put it back on the agenda when we make a decision at that time.
In the meantime, can I have any questions?
But this price is good till the end of this month.
It's good till the end of this month.
Yeah.
And what was the price again?
Total overall five-year price, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, I think it's important. Anything else on the body camera discussion? Moving on to discussion regarding anti-tethering laws.
Guessing that might be why you're here?
Having read through the proposed, those here. My only concern is putting a thirty-minute time limit on somebody tethering doesn't allow for what I would consider reasonable. You know, we have a fenced yard now we didn't use to. It wouldn't be unheard of for, we're going to go vacuum and clean the floors, we put the dog on the tether that we had right out our front door and they'd be out there for an hour or so. But that was just, you know, they're outside for an hour, hour and a half while we were doing stuff in the house or, you know, nice day on Thanksgiving, you got a lot of action going on in the kitchen and dogs really love to hang out and see if you're going to drop anything for them to eat and risk stepping up there.
Is there a cost that goes with this? Do we have any idea what it's going to cost?
No. For you mean for enforcement?
Yes.
I would say it just depends on how many cases we have and I don't know how many cases that we have in this city.
I mean, I'd rather see a dog on a chain or something than to have a fenced yard when I'm out there working because if a dog on a chain, I can get around real easily. Fences cause me more problems. I don't think the tethering is that big a deal.
Now, there are some incidents in this town of tethers where they're on chains, that each part of the chain's bigger than this pin that I've got in my hand, and it is definitely not what I would consider a humane situation. Again, that's why I'm saying, I think putting a thirty-minute time limit or something very stringent like that to me is a concern. It's more of a lifestyle thing. You know, how is... Is the dog always on a tether? Is the dog on a tether that is excessive for their weight? You know, I think it was the AKCs or somebody, one of the ones I read, because we read a few this last week, an eighth of the body weight or something like that, or some way of measuring the... Something that's reasonable for a dog. Dogs are going to... If in an area where not everybody has fenced yards, dogs are going to be on tethers. I think that's a... A rate, that's something that's going to happen. Because we don't want dogs just running loose across the town.
Right.
There's too many houses. You go walk your dog around some of these streets around here and people have their dogs in their yard when you're walking down the street, but if you're walking your dog, next thing you know, here comes this big dog. We've had a big dog come after my wife's little, havinge's little puppy thing. And, I mean, it was scary.
Here we'll come.
Yeah.
But dogs are allowed to run loose anyway.
I understand that.
When you drive down the...
But they still do.
They still do.
Um, because not everybody asks for them because not everybody puts them on a tether even when they're outside in the backyard with them. So I think there's a... I guess what I'm trying to say is I think there's a middle ground.
When you drive down the street and you see a tree with a five-foot rope or a ten-foot chain and there's no grass in a circle and there's no water, no shelter, and it's a hundred degrees or zero, I think that's when you... They're not in there cleaning a house for thirty, three hundred and sixty days, you know, that's...
Let me just talk about it. You know, be a nylon and so forth versus log chains or differentiations of what that looks like, for it to be humane, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that would be...
I think this boils back to everything that we discuss all the time, it seems like, is having teeth in it and following through that somebody that is clear enough that the code enforcement officer can immediately do something with it than we can as a pal to take care of it, you know what I'm saying? We have too many generalities. What is unsightly? There's a perfect example, the laws we have. What's unsightly? What's unsightly, you might not be unsightly to me. This guy told me that his mower in the front yard was, with weed growing up around it, was art. Okay? I lost my freaking mind. So the point being, I think one thing we need to think about is these comebacks, which I'm glad it asked, because me and Mike seen a house and I took Donnie, drove by and showed him a place that had this situation. It was not humane treatment, okay? So the bottom line is, we need to think as we look at these, how do we write these and how do we put these in place where it's enforceable, pretty black and white of what that interpretation could be, where you cross the line, right? Because it talks about my line in Columbia's and so forth and it really just differentiates what the materials can be based on the way the dog, all that kind of stuff, right? Bill of the dog, all that kind of stuff. And...
When we sent out this information all over before, it did ask me, you know, about can we do what Columbia does because Columbia is a charter city and we're a fourth-class city and we're restricted on what we can adopt. And so I did ask Sydney that and she said that we can't do everything that Columbia does. We're just not allowed to. But we can incorporate some of the things that they do into our ordinance to revise what we currently have and she really thought that if we did something similar, you know, to what Carthage does and Columbia and incorporate the things that we can't do from Columbia's ordinance, that we can make it work to make it better for Centrilia. So we just have to make sure that we're legally doing what we can.
And the reason for the question was because as a fourth-class city, we're allowed to enact ordinances that the state says we can enact. We cannot enact ordinances unless the state gives us permission to enact those ordinances. As a first-class city, or any charter city, they can enact any law they want as long as it's not prevented by the state laws. And so there's a difference of what we can do and what we can't do.
What, I guess what I would like to know is what direction you all would like to take this or if you want to think about it and some suggestions, so that we can come up with an ordinance, a proposed ordinance after that, if this is something you want to move forward with or if you think you need more discussion, so...
She said he was talking about incorporating things like Carthage and the parts of Columbia's that are available to us. I'd like to see that as a draft.
Okay.
I mean, I think some of this is a little excessive, but I mean, until you see it written...
That's my point. That's my point. Until we see...
And I don't want to see generalities in there. Because you can enforce generalities.
I agree. That's probably have badly to that. The chickens is another thing. We'll talk about that in a few times. I mean, it's an ordinance thing where she can't... It's not clear how you figure how many chickens you can have. I mean, as crazy as that sounds, she's dealing with that. She's frustrated with it. We need to kind of help her, give her something. You're right, exactly right. Generalities don't work.
So I don't know that Sydney and I'll have time to get it ready for the June seventeenth meeting, but I can definitely work with her and get it ready by the next committee meeting as a draft, which would be July eighth.
I think that would be more appropriate than anything. I think we need time to discuss it.
Okay.
And think about it and...
Lady who does animal control should...
Standby.
Sandy.
Standby.
Ronald Lincoln Mayne should get her input on this too. She sees some of this stuff. You know, she knows, she may be able to clarify a few things. Well, if you do this, I could fix that situation. If you do that, my hands are so tied. You know, I would definitely get her input in this because she's the one that's going to be enacting it and working through it.
Treating the latest, maybe.
Dr. Dane, and Board of...
My name's Melody Whitworth. I'm from Columbia. I'm the director of Unchained Melody's Dog Rescue. We are a dog rescue. We are based out of Columbia, but we do work all over the state and sometimes we even cross the state lines. We are responsible for helping write and getting the ordinance in Columbia passed a year ago, last June. I've also worked with Roachport to get fat ordinance passed and helping a few other smaller towns. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I work very closely with animal control in Columbia and I actually talked to Molly Aus this afternoon and I asked her, it's been a year now, how is it going? And she had nothing but great things to say about it. She said that it does make the animal control officer's job much easier. It's a better use of resources instead of Sandy getting called to the same property every, over and over and over because they're required to go every time they get a call and it's just redundant, over and over. Nothing more she can do, you know, food, water, shelter. So they have written quite a few summons, which again brings revenue into the city, which could help pay for those cameras, which I feel are very important. And it helped tremendously this past winter when the snow and the cold weather was so bad. She told me a story today about there just being a little bump in the snow and if it wasn't reported, they wouldn't have been able to help that dog. Nobody could even tell that it was a dog. And because of the ordinance, they were able to remove that dog immediately. Summons them for tethering it, not only tethering it twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, breaking just about every portion of the ordinance, including the chain around the neck, the length and the width of the chain, but they also in turn called DAS because I guess the inside of the house, the living conditions of the children were just as bad as the living conditions of the dogs. And unfortunately, it does run hand in hand quite often. When you see animals treated in certain ways, sometimes there are issues inside the house that are happening too. So if authorities have the right to get on the property and help the animals, in turn they can also help, you know, the family as well quite often. So the thirty minute, how much time do I have? Just tell me to stop whenever. I don't have a time limit?
There's not a specific time limit.
Okay, cool. You might have to tell me to leave. So the thirty minutes, so what we did when we wrote the ordinance in Columbia, I'm from Florida and I've lived here about twenty years, and down there, one county wrote an ordinance and every county just started adopting the very same ordinance rather than going through and rewriting and going back to the chalkboard over and over and over again. When that ordinance was written, they decided to take the timeframe out because around the country, there's big cities that have these ordinances, small towns, rural communities that have these ordinances. The time thing always seems to get hung up. What everybody gets hung up on is the timeframe. So the first ordinance that was written in Columbia was back in 2010 and there was no limitation. It just stated it could not be, tethering could not be primary means of confinement. So this time around, they, again, were spinning their wheels. That ordinance just was not working for them, so they decided to put all those teeth back in and they determined on their own, after looking at all kinds of ordinances all over the country, from no time limit to thirty minutes to an hour to time limits like some places have, where you can't tether the dog between like eight AM and eight PM, things like that. They decided thirty minutes because it was easy to enforce. And Molly actually quoted me on that today. She said that the animal control officer has no problem sitting in their car and finding something to do for thirty minutes. She said they usually give them forty-five, give them a little bit of a break, you know, they're not going to write on the dot of thirty. And they also go and say, hey, you know, are you aware? Because a lot of people don't even know there's an ordinance even a year later. You know, it never got put in any of our utility bills or anything like that, so it's still a learning curve for the community. So one good thing about Centrilia is it's much smaller and it might be much easier to notify people when there is a new ordinance, you know? Columbia is not going to spend the money to put it in our utilities, so... So they decided on the thirty just strictly for that reason, because it was easy to enforce. They can literally sit out in the car for thirty minutes and time it and then wait another fifteen to see if someone comes home or goes out and releases the dog from the tether. So... But you're right, that is always the timeframe, always really is the big hangup and some communities just, you know, feel one's more fair than another, you know? But the fact of the matter is, there, I've done a lot of work in Centrilia. I've removed dogs from here. I've gone to properties and helped people. Unfortunately, I probably have enabled a few people to, you know, by giving them dog houses and straw, but I'm trying to be there as a friendly, helpful rescue organization, you know, to try to educate them about why it's so bad for these dogs to live out there like this, you know? Not only is it bad for the dog, it's bad for the community, you know? Bite cases, it's the number one reason for bite cases in our children in the country. Barna, dogs on chains. You get them off the chain and, you know, they're different, they're different animals. They get very territorial and which can turn to aggression, so... So anyway, obviously if I wrote the ordinance, I can, you know, load it to bear here, so I guess you don't need to do this. I did have one thing I wanted to hand out though, if that's okay? The doghouse thing, you know, state statute says, you know, these plastic boxes are okay as shelter. And I did this experiment a couple of years ago, if you want to take one and pass it down. The plastic doghouses are really microwaves. I mean, they're okay for the winter if they've got straw because they can go in there and they can hunker down, but in the summertime, they are microwaves. And that shows right there, the temperature outside was eighty-eight and the temperature at the front door of the doghouse was one seventy-five. So what is it back in the doghouse? You know? So again, just another detriment of these dogs being out there twenty-four, seven with nothing but a plastic box to give them some supposed shelter, but in the summer, it just isn't good enough. They've got to be in shade whether they're out there fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, an hour, whatever the limitation is, but, so...
I've got a question. What do you do about a dog provoke in a doghouse?
Well, it needs, legally, it needs to have some kind of shelter. So it could, you know, be under a deck or something like that would be considered...
We had a dog that wouldn't go into the, he wouldn't go in it. You couldn't get him inside, you couldn't get him into a doghouse. You put straw out there, he'll scratch the straw off the outside, he'll sleep on the outside.
Have you ever tried fried chicken maybe? Those are fried chicken in the back of the doghouse. I don't know what it's for that.
If I wanted him in the garage because it was that cold, you literally had to drag him in and hold him until the garage door was closed. Because if you let him up before that garage door closed...
He was a mutt.
He was a mutt.
He was a park healer and I don't know what the other part was, but he did not like to be inside at all.
If he doesn't go in the doghouse as long as he's cared for and isn't out there twenty-four, seven, at...
He was, he was outside twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five.
But he wasn't chained, right?
No.
So he could move around and run.
Well, we live down the country.
He lives out the country.
Yeah. So it wasn't an issue?
Yeah. Because the dogs are chained though, you know?
You couldn't put him in a doghouse.
The dogs are chained, they're just stuck there.
I realize that.
They can't protect themselves, they can't keep themselves warm, they can't keep themselves cool, so...
I mean, he'd stay out at twenty below if I let him.
You still have him?
No.
No.
You froze him.
Yeah, I froze him.
And we digress.
Actually, when we moved to Centralia, we put him on a nylon cord, a rope, and he chewed through it at least once a day and we'd find him a block away. He never would stay in our yard, no matter what we did with him.
You'd need a long chain to keep him in place.
Yeah.
Sounds like an impale.
No, he's a very good dog.
Yeah, any questions for me about what we do or how we do it or the ordinance itself?
Dog wouldn't hurt fly unless you touched his kits. Don't touch his kits.
Thank you very much, thank you for considering us. We really appreciate it.
I don't, Bob, you know where we're at with the tornado sirens?
We did placement of them, what was that Jeff?
Been a little while.
And would you guess location on him? He'd come to that time and probably be two and a half months.
Okay.
Thank you. Protective inspection.
Thank you very much.
Protective inspection.
The notices for the comment section for the demolition project will be posted on the May 31st at the library, City Hall, Springer. And that has an eighteen day period, so we're about day ten of that eighteen days, and then we'll go on to the day.
Moving on, general government and finance, economic development. There's information from Jenny, Chamber. The wine walk is coming up.
July, July's my son.
Any questions, comments? Moving on, park boards. Information's in your packet. Cemetery report, none?
There was a report in here just about the donations collected for Memorial Weekend. You always have volunteers that collect donations at the cemetery, so this year they collected $2,059. And some people do designate their donation as for the Adam flag specifically, so they'll best to keep that out.
Tree board, no? Library board? Needing minutes for your packet? Moving on, May 2019 financial statements, those are not in the packet.
They are not. They will be included in Monday's packet. That wasn't quite ready.
So AP over $1,252?
First line has no dollar figure, so.
It's free this year.
Transmission charges, wow. TBD.
She may not have had the bill because a lot of these are recurring charges, so she just leaves the name in there each month. She just may not have had the bill yet.
Moving on, other government, anything? Any other? Any as may arise? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Second, all who are here, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, we stand adjourned. We need a break before we go to our final meeting. Okay, it's 7:54. I'm calling the regular scheduled public works and public utilities committee to order. Tendence has been taken. Fudge of allegiance has been said. Any comments from citizens?
Yep. It's me again. Who determines when a tree is on city right of way and whether or not it has to be taken out?
I'm the one that usually goes and checks that.
Okay, because I, as we all know, I run around with a bunch of older women who have treaties that they think are supposed to be being taken out. And so I was asked to find out what the rules were and who they needed to talk to, so.
What we usually check is the easements, city easements, see where they're at and determine from there when we can get to them if it is a city tree. And if the danger is near power lines, I mean, that's gonna be the most critical. If it's just a tree that's out front and it's in, got some dead limbs and stuff, it may have to wait until later on in the year when we get to it, depending on what the available date.
Okay, cool. Now, weed control downtown. We just had Anchorfest with however many thousands of people here and our alleys and our sidewalks are full of grass and weeds. Now, I personally take care of everything around our building, but there's not another building, I don't think, downtown that doesn't have grass or weeds coming up. Coach Inlow years ago used to make sure that that all got sprayed. I don't know how, what, where, when, any of that stuff. But it's something that we need to look at because our alleys and our sidewalks with grass and stuff are getting pretty bad.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they used to have community service workers that took care of it. I know Lynn had had community service workers do that in the past.
I've seen parts of department truck move by and spray some of that in the past, been years ago.
So it might be a combination of the two.
Well, whatever, I mean, we need to do something about it because it doesn't make our city look good. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from citizens? Moving on, we'll close this section, move on to public works. There is an activity report for streets in your packet. Anything you would like to add, Ray?
Oh, we've done, did a lot of grain work, storm sewer projects and a lot of culverts and getting ready for Anchorfest.
Any questions on the street activity packet? Now we've got a dust control on here.
We've had dust control applied on Ivies Campbell in South Columbia. Friday, I think it was, yeah. Yeah, Friday morning, the cob dust control come up and got it done for us.
Anything else on that? Sanitation, we've got a commercial trash rate increase.
We did not have a rate increase for commercial trash of 2018, almost 2017. But we are currently paying things more than we are charging our commercial customers. Residential rates are still fine. We're, we still are covering our administrative costs on that. But for commercial rates, we're not. So I have proposed a five percent increase over Dane's charges. It doesn't, it's not a huge increase over what, what we're currently paying. It doesn't really, it doesn't amount to a lot, but it just amount to the administrative fee, you know, just for ladies in the office to do the billing, complete all the recorders, those types of things.
What percentage do we charge above the?
The residential.
Residential.
It's not very much. I'd have to look at it to be sure, but we haven't changed it since 2016. Since we, well, since we switched to Dane's, we haven't changed it.
Do these prices reflect that five percent?
The ones with the bottom five.
Yep, got you.
And then.
If we raise it five percent, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, so the top section is, you know, what we currently charge and then the bottom section is what we would charge if we increased it over, which, so our fees are, I mean, it would not increase that much. So if you look at like the hand stop or the one 96 gallons or less, there was no change for one time per week. And then there's actually a decrease for two times of one 96 gallon, probably per week. And the same for the two, so.
So it's a mixed bag on where we're at on these things.
Right, because the dumpster rates are where it gets us.
Yeah, along the cubic yard with the dusters, they, they went from thirty-six to thirty-nine, as an example, to the cubic yard, which a lot of people have since last year.
Seems reasonable to me. Any discussion?
You've got to cover.
Yeah, we gotta cover.
So we have a sort of ready for Monday if you're in favor.
Any objections to the ordinance being prepared? We're good on that. Anything for storm sewer?
No.
Sorry, you what?
Anything for storm sewer?
Far enough. All bad sanitation question. Uh, no, we just got a lot of small drainage projects where we're still working on, trying to get things caught up after all the spring rains.
Okay, any other for public works? If there's none, moving on to water and sewer. Have an activity report here? Mike, Michael, answer any questions if anybody has them?
Pretty much, they've been trying, they've been doing a lot of work in the lagoons. Finally drying up, they can get out and do some mowing before DNR does inspections. This is about the time here, they usually start that, so they've been doing a lot of cleanup. They couldn't do a lot of the other work, so they have been able to do some of that. They're getting ready to start out there to add, putting the water line in, so.
Anything for sewer? City of Leather? The leather? Over water?
No.
Moving on to electric. There's an activity report from the direction in your packets. Jeff, anything you wanna point out?
I've got a recordage. Something daily comes up. There's sixty new poles around town. I've been trying to work on transferring those.
Anything for generation of purchase?
They did have a few issues at the Wilson Street substation, but it's an activity report. They were able to fix that.
No, both, both of them.
Distribution?
We had talked about the possible planned power outage for Amaran to fix there, switch in. We did not have to do that. We did not have to do a power outage. As they were able to, yes, they were able to reroute everything to the Wilson Street substation while they worked on Burkhart.
Jeff, you might explain to them what might be happening this fall with those fuses that are kinda odd.
Burkhart?
Yeah.
Well, they're as old as the substation. And it's just hard to get parts, it's hard to get fuses for it. I mean, I had to go, we had to go, we didn't have to go. We talked to Malden, Missouri. They actually had a fuse that would fit in our, because it's a, it's a thirty-four, five thousand feet on that side. It's gotta be a special fuse. Well, they sent me a fuse. It wasn't big enough, but we can get by on it. But the date on the box was 1966. So, I mean, I'm getting a quote on new fuses, fuse doors, everything that we had an issue with that day. Basically, it just, it blew a fuse and it dropped a phase out of the substation. So then we had to switch everything over to the other sub and then Amaran was coming on Wednesday to that sub, so we didn't, we weren't gonna put it back online and then have to shut it back again. But yeah, that, that, it's old. I mean, they need to be replaced. Hopefully the mounting equipment will be very comparable and we'll take a whole lot of gear.
Anything on distribution? And we have some quotes for some wire. If I'm reading it correctly, the Northern Missouri is the a little cheaper than the two?
The the length of the wire that's on the spool is the issue. I think the Northern Missouri is only, it's two spools at a thousand. And I need at least eighteen hundred feet on a spool. So I've really only got one quote that can get that number. So it's really it really, it really, it's a Arkansas electric are the ones that can get that amount of spool.
And this is for Simmons.
This is for Simmons.
You have short out in this irrigation field. And this is, how many times y'all fixed that?
I fixed it five, six.
Yeah, it's just time to do a new one. You'll have to run a whole new run in, so.
Well, it's, see, it's direct buried now. I mean, you gotta go out there and find it, dig it up. Last time we went out there to repair it, we dug forty feet of ditch before we found a good wire. We were on the wire, but the coating was so bad on it that and then they had one go bad and where the water line and the old phases were, they moved over ten feet and put in a single phase. So they're not even all in the same ditch at this point.
But this will allow us to rectify?
Well, we're gonna pipe it all the way. Careful, pipe.
Is this to be on our agenda next week or do we?
Well, because it's shorted out and they needed to get it done, they were actually our two workheads. To make sure, but we just wanted to let you know because it was a repair that needed to be done right away.
Okay.
Should we make a motion?
Sure, go ahead, let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and buy the wire that we need at 2,000. Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor of buying wire from Marcus on electric? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to other, we have a report from Mr. Forsey. Mike, anything you wanna point out in here?
No. Phil's been doing a really good job getting, taking care of people's coves that they need replaced, which is helping our drainage considerably. I mean, we've had a couple of things we've found that people have came to us with and not only, we already knew it, but now we've got an avenue to get them fixed, so that's helping the drainage, which we can always use in Centralia. They did a good job getting everything down to Anchorfest and getting it ready, sidewalks. Hopefully it can get going tomorrow. Within the next week and a half, he should be done with all the sidewalks around here. We'll have to run everybody through the back, come inside to get in, but we can do that pretty easily. Working with Barland West, off and on, the projects coming up. Some things Gary didn't elaborate on too much are kinda like to point out. We had one farmer come on, is actually right on top of our main line that feeds all the farmers. That's gonna save us a lot of money by it being so close to running. And he was quick to point that out and definitely thinks that'll definitely be one of the add-ins. So most material's there that he's looking at. He's already got it. It's just a matter of compiling. So I don't think he's gonna hurt us too bad with the cost on that.
How about your conversation with Bodog around about? Sorry, I caught my eye.
That's a just in case thing. They're trying to appropriate money for projects coming up. And because this has been an issue, they're looking at it to see if they're possibly get it put on. They want to be ready if anything, money does become available projects and this is, they said it could possibly be a project. So they were just wanting to know about utilities, see how much it'd be affected both sides of the road.
Where do they put that?
One twenty-four and twenty-two.
A roundabout?
It's gonna be a waste of money. Yeah, you don't work the accidents, I think.
Why would you put a roundabout where there's fifteen, a hundred semis a day go through there?
It's gonna have to be a big one. From what I've seen, it is a big one.
Might as well put one on the middle I70.
Well, I, the numbers are there and I just, they, they've done everything they could possibly use that intersection without putting an overpass over top of it. And the fact is, if you're looking for the safety of the people who come to this town, yeah, okay, granted. I've never crashed here. Many of you probably have never crashed here, but a lot of people do. So I, I, I understand your point, but I also understand the traffic safety and the safety of the local citizens, so.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions, Mr. Forsey? I have a request here for reclaim furniture to close one block of North Jenkins Street every other Saturday. They're only open.
Oh, no, I just, sorry, I copied that. I didn't change it. It is the second Saturday. It is still second Saturday, sorry.
Second Saturday every month.
So you asked for some clarification. Mike did talk to Dollar Tree, Inpreneurs, and neither would have an issue with it. So it's just a motion from the board if you are okay.
I'll probably not focus. How about putting out focus? I don't know if every favor or not.
I got a motion in second to allow the closing of North Jenkins Street every second Saturday of the month. All in favor? Any opposed? Any as may arise?
Pardon me, that second Saturday of the month, is that a seasonal thing or literally all the way to the hockey season?
They didn't say specifically their timeframe, but I would imagine weather permitting, because it's outside.
I think a motion would be true.
Second.